Good evening. Welcome to the Troy City Council's special meeting for December 11th, 2017. I will call that meeting to order. Your real call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
All present, we have a discussion item this evening and we have three portions of that discussion item this evening. And that is to discuss and hopefully educate the council on the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Facilities Licensing Act. As I indicated before we started, for those of you in the audience, you will be given an opportunity to speak after the discussion. If you want to speak in the public comments section, please fill out a card that's up here near the microphone. You will be allotted three minutes to speak in the public comments section. We ask that you just listen this evening up until that portion of the meeting. We have three special guests with us this evening. I'd like to introduce first Shelley Edgerton, the Director for the Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. I'd also like to introduce Jeff Schroeder. He's a senior attorney with Plunkett and Cooney. And of course Lloyd Green Bloom, the City Attorney, along with Alan Motzney, Assistant City Attorney, that are going to participate in the discussion this evening. Before we start, I want to thank City Manager Kishnik. At the last city council meeting, we directed him to put together a panel to help educate the city council on this important issue that's facing each city in the state of Michigan today. Thank you, Brian, for putting together a panel. Our purpose this evening is to try and educate the city council to make a good decision. So it's always important to hear every side of an issue before you make your decision. So thank you, Brian, for doing that this evening. So first, I will call on Shelley Edgerton to give us an overview from Laura's perspective. If you could just indicate to us what Laura is and what your responsibilities and duties are.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. A pleasure to be here tonight. Apologize for being late. Those were a little facey coming from Lansing, but anyways. Laura is the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs. We're assigned the task of regulating a wide variety of issues, you know, anything from fire services, construction codes, myosha, energy, and now medical marijuana. So the legislature charged us with that responsibility to implement what was then the three public acts that passed really kind of almost in this timeframe that we were last year when we started this. The bills were passed in September, effective, you know, in December. So we were charged with the responsibility to kind of take on and build a regulatory program from scratch. We do a lot of licensing. We regulate and license nearly a million and a half people, licensed individuals and facilities. So it is kind of, you know, in our mantra to do a regulatory program. With that, the legislature did give us that authority. And so we have been working, like all probably communities who have gotten wind of this and their ability to do anything, to educate yourselves, to study it, to learn from the industry themselves, go to presentations, and get just about everything that we could get, hopefully, a knowledge. And I will say as a caveat for this industry, one thing is that it moves very quickly. I mean, I don't think in the state, even what I will call the mature states like, you know, Oregon or Colorado or Washington, who have, you know, had rec or marijuana or medical for a while, you know, they're still evolving constantly. It's a daily, you know, catch-up kind of thing. So we are trying to do the best that we can to put this regulatory program together. We've had about a year to put not only a program in place with applications and that processing, but also IT, and to kind of build a structure for people to start off the program on December 15th. So it's been a lot and, you know, I used to make presentations where you would show me like drinking from a fire hose. Now we're building the plane as we fly it. We're a little bit closer and we might have the wheels ready for a touchdown because we are going to take applications on Friday. So with that, you know, we have done a few things. I've created within my department, the Bureau of Medical Marijuana Regulation, felt that it was better to consolidate all marijuana policy, regulation, any types of discussions within one bureau versus having it in multiple departments like some states do. We have, the governor appointed a board in June, five members. We've had several board members, several board meetings, sorry. I'm sure a lot of you, you may be able to stream it or watch it or have a presence there. And part of the reason for a lot of those was, one, to get the board up to speed on a lot of the issues involving the industry, but kind of, you know, demonstrate a direction that we would be going. So we've been having those quite regularly. The other thing we've done as a department, just to kind of move forward, because obviously we didn't have an application bill, didn't have the emergency rules done, was to put out advisories. And that was based upon a lot of input from industry regulators, discussion with professionals about which way we should go in certain areas and things, things that were not ever really contemplated by statute. There's broad authority within statute to do rules and kind of interpretations on things. So we have tried to make that direction known. Some of the simpler things were like coal location, never mentioned in statute or other. We have allowed that. Stacking of Class C licenses, not really mentioned, it's silent. We see there's some efficiency there. So some of those kind of advisories were put out, you know, based off of work groups, conversations, so some thought to it. And finally, you know, we probably get to one of the more important things that we released, and that's the emergency rules, 33 pages. The emergency rules are never intended to be a full-bodied, neat, you know, every nuance possible for rules to be there. Normally, emergency rules are about three pages. So when we gave the governor's office 33 pages, they were a little like, what? You know? So it was always been kind of a skinny framework. And these are good for six months. We can ask for them to be renewed for another six months. But it was to start this program and get us off the ground for December 15th. We will begin the regular rulemaking process that will probably put a lot more, as I like to say, meat on the rules, or change these emergency rules, or go in something entirely a new direction, which is at all very possible with this industry. So we will begin that probably in January, maybe towards the end of January. Obviously, with December 15th, we're starting to take applications, licensing and the processing of those applications is going to be, you know, very high priority for us in the department. Regards to applications, I think there's probably some people here, obviously, we had an advisory checklist. People could get an idea of what was going to be required. Last Friday, we actually pushed out the application. You can't apply online yet, but you could certainly, you know, print off the forty-some pages and get an idea of the documentations and signatures that you're going to have. And then we are ready to go on Friday. We will be accepting online applications and we will be taking them in person at the Ottawa Building in Lansing. And we expect some people will bring their paper applications and their cash or their checks or their credit cards to pay their license fee with that. Issuing a license, that's always a key question. Everybody's like, when are you going to do it? When are you going to do it? Well, you know, we have to process the applications. We have to make sure they're completed applications, go through all the information that's provided. You know, there may be some that are simple, that it might be relatively easy, that we can get to sooner rather than later. We've kept, we have said pretty much first quarter. We don't know if that might be February. It could be March or April. We are, a lot of it is dependent upon the information provided by the applicants. And sometimes that information takes time because we ask for information, somebody's like, oh, I need to check with my CPA, I need to check with my attorney, oh, let me send that information back in. So we, there's times, you know, we'll go there. We know that some people are going to do the two-step process. They're only going to come in and do, you know, the pre-application, the pre-qualification because they don't have local approval yet, nor do they know where they're going to go for local approval. And so they can come in and get pre-qualified. Well, there's going to be a step out there hanging on their application until they get that local approval. We recognized early on with this industry and in this regulated market that some people will be very prepared, some people will just want to get in, but don't really know where they're going yet. A lot of municipalities are kind of a wait-and-see. Obviously, they're a wait-and-see for the emergency rules. A lot of them are not sure if they're doing it at all. They might want to just wait until the program rolls out. But we wanted to give applicants the ability to at least be pre-qualified so if maybe a location was full or decided not to do it, they could go search someplace else. And that would be the final step to bring their, bring to us is that authorization by the locals. So in a nutshell, we're ready to go December 15th. So we, I'm very proud of the program. I mean, we developed two IT systems and put a regulatory framework around this to get us started in a year.
Thank you. Do we want to ask questions as we go along, or would you prefer to hear from each of our guests before we do, or do we have specific questions that we may want to ask first?
Are you going to be here the whole meeting?
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you. I'm sure we'll have some questions.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
It might be best to listen to the presentation and its entirety.
Sure.
And then we can ask questions and maybe weed out who might be best to answer that question. So, yeah. No pun intended.
Sometimes it's hard to get away from those questions.
Embrace it.
Embrace it and just move on.
So next, I'll ask Jeff Schroeder to speak next. And Jeff, if you could just give us your background and tell us what you have to bring to this meeting today.
First of all, Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for the invitation to be here today. My name is Jeff Schroeder. I'm a senior attorney at Plunkett Cooney, close by here in Bloomfield Hills area, Open County. We are one of the oldest, largest, and most conservative law firms in the Midwest. And yes, we have a cannabis law group. And I am part of that group. I came to Plunkett Cooney after 15 years of government service. I come from a law enforcement and municipal background. I was an assistant city attorney for nine years in the city of Warren, one of our neighbors here. I, we can't see the battle scars, but nine years in Warren was, was a lot of battles, a lot of land use battles, which is what we may see in terms of the future of medical marijuana facilities. I represented the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals. I drafted ordinances, regulatory ordinances. And from there, I went to the Attorney General's office for five years, where I was in the healthcare fraud division prosecuting major healthcare fraud felonies. I was on a task force with the U.S. Attorney's Office here in the Eastern District of Michigan, investigating and prosecuting fraud and embezzlement in the healthcare arena. And when this law was passed, I decided to head over to the private sector and try to use my experience to help those in the industry. So yes, I am representing individuals who are in the industry, and I can give some perspective from those individuals. I do also currently represent three municipalities. My firm represents a lot of municipalities, two cities and one township. And none of those municipalities have made a decision of what they're going to do. So that being said, as a prosecutor, certainly as a city attorney, I spent many hours a week prosecuting these simple misdemeanor possession of marijuana violations. I can't tell you how many mornings I'd walk into the Warren Police Station and have a stack of warrant requests as high. And half of them were people driving with a small amount of marijuana. And in 2008, the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act was passed. And suddenly, people were coming into court and trying to say that, you know, they're a patient and, you know, but they didn't have their card at the time they were pulled over and issued the violation. And we had to tell them, look, you need to follow the rules, okay? I've always been one that believes you must follow the rules. So you go get your marijuana card, medical marijuana card, if you qualify, you can come back and tell the judge that, but we're not dismissing this violation. So there was a period of time where there was a real gray area with this. And I think that's what led to this legislation. Where were they getting it? Who was growing it? Certainly, there were rules about caregivers who can grow up to six plants for 12 plants for every patient that they have. And, but there's a lot of gray area. And I can remember in Warren, we were having grow operations in homes. We actually had one woman who, she started this grow operation, and she thought it was too much, and she took all the product and put it into a lawn and leaf bag and put it out to the curb. And the sanitation department was coming by and got it, and that turned into an issue. So this proposal, when it passed, it passed by an overwhelming margin, but it left a lot of issues not addressed. How do you get the medicine from A to B? How do you grow it? How do you process it? How do you transport it? And that's what the legislature did in this case. And then, you know, speaking of overwhelming support, I went back and looked in the city of Troy in 2008, this is nine years ago, 68% of Troy voters voted yes for adopting the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, even with all of these flaws that the law had. Fast forward to 2016 with the three public acts that we were just talked about, we're just told about here, that led to this, we had two things happen in Lansing that never happened. And number one, you had bipartisan support for legislation. You don't see that very often. Passed the House 83 to 22, passed the Senate 25 to 12. And number two, you actually had the legislature adopting laws giving more local control instead of taking global control away. So you had two things wrapped up in the one that you never see, a bipartisan support and Lansing giving more control to the locals. And I think that that's something that the city should look at, 33 pages of rules, emergency rules that were passed, and how specific they get with regulating each one of these five uses or each one of these five licenses. There's a lot of detail here. And I think what is important to understand is what's called the statewide tracking system, the seed-to-sale tracking system, where the state has hired a contractor that is going to track every ounce of product from the moment it is grown through the transport process, all the way to the provisioning center to the point of sale. They're even going to track waste. All of this has to be entered into the system. If you are a patient coming into a provisioning center and purchasing medicine, you'll have to present your card. It will be put in the system, and that product with that batch and barcode number on it will be matched up with your purchase, and you will not be able to go to another facility in the state of Michigan and purchase over your daily limit. And there is a daily limit prescribed in the rules. So there's really a lot of regulation in terms of tracking, because I think one of the biggest concerns from a municipal perspective, when you think of allowing these uses in your community, and what effect is this going to have on the neighborhoods? What effect is it going to have on the surrounding uses of land, the existing business owners? How's it going to tax the police department? How's it going to tax the fire department, the building department? All those issues. And these rules show you that the state is going to have a very close eye on everything. In fact, this is going to be far more closely watched than, let's say, Schedule I prescription drugs that you can get at Rite Aid or CVS, okay? They're going to track every last bit of product here. And I think that's important to understand because I would, if I didn't know a lot about this, I'd be concerned that, how do I know if I allow this in my community that there's not going to be some shady operation out the back door, the side door, where kids in the neighborhood are going to get access to it? That would be a concern of mine. How do we know that people aren't going to be able to manipulate the system to divert product into the black market? God knows they know how to divert black market, product into the black market from prescription drugs. So we already know that's going on. So those are some of the concerns that are addressed by these rules. And so I think another issue is, when you look at these facilities and you see how heavily regulated they will be, I just want to point out that, I don't know if anybody here has visited any of these sort of existing facilities that they call dispensaries in Detroit and other places. There are some of those that were actually run properly under the caregiver model. But let's be honest, and I think the state knows this, there's a lot of facilities that just were not operating legally and properly, that they were not keeping the right amount of product. People were coming in without their cards and making purchases. And these places were in ramshackle buildings with neon green paint and, you know, the neon lights with the marijuana leaf and, you know, sort of really crazy names attached to them. And I think those are the kind of things, if I were in your shoes, I would want to avoid that in my community. I wouldn't want any sore thumb looking building with neon lights, you know? That whole thing, I think, has set back the industry here in Michigan because people have in their mind's eye these facilities that are being raided by the police, that aren't operating legally, people that went out there and operated without a license. But that's not going to be permitted. And in fact, the state has very specific rules about allowing those individuals who are operating currently to continue operating. They want to make sure they're following the rules and that they have been actually approved by the municipality. So the other thing is the five different licenses. I think everybody has probably by now heard exactly what the five different licenses are. I think the type of jobs that they could bring in the community should be looked at. With the retail outlets, you know, they're going to have technicians who work there. But if you look at, for example, like processors, processors are going to have to hire chemical engineers, they're going to have to hire organic chemists, they're going to have to have managers. These are high-tech jobs, high-skilled jobs. And the same goes for the growers, for the cultivators. They're going to have to have gardeners, botanists. These are high-tech, high-skilled jobs. They're going to have a lot at stake there, so, you know, they need to know how to maintain these products. And, you know, if they have a disease take over the plant, so there's some sort of accident, you know, they're going to lose a lot of money. So they need highly skilled technical people for these jobs, and these are going to be six-figure jobs when you look at chemical engineers, master gardeners. And I think that that should be a consideration as well. I do know that, and I don't know a lot about it, but I do know that there's 55 existing facilities in the city of Troy, and these growing facilities are compliant under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act, where each caregiver can have up to 12 plants per patient, up to five patients. And what's going to happen to these individuals? My understanding is that the city is aware of it, has inspected these facilities, and the question is what happens to them if other cities opt in and they leave? I think that's a consideration. I guess they can continue under the old law, but how do they compete with someone who can get a license to grow 1,500 plants if they have a maximum of 72 plants? How do they compete with that? And what's going to happen to these facilities? So I think that's something to look at as well. And with respect to what you can regulate, I was just looking at the city of Lansing ordinance today, and it is very extensive. The state has basically said the locals can regulate any aspect of this in any way they want, except for two things, quality and purity of the product. And that, I think, makes a lot of sense. There are a number of standards set in these rules for the safety compliance facilities, the labs that are going to be testing the product, and the standards they have to meet. So it makes sense that, you know, each community is not going to have a different standard for, you know, purity and quality. Kind of reminds me of many years ago when communities could have different building codes, you know, it's hard to go from community to community and comply with that. So you can regulate almost anything other than purity and quality. You can decide where they're going. You can decide how far they are from sensitive uses. You can require special land use approval. You can get as creative as you want. In fact, in the city of Lansing, they, of course, they had a lot of facilities. They're trying to cull the herd there because they had too many of them. And I think they're going to do a good job at it because they have, they've made them put together security plans, show us what alarm system you have, show us, you know, your entry, your exits. You have to have a full-time security guard. They're regulating the hours of operation. They want to know what their plan is, if there's waste product, oh, that's not going to get into the sewer system, and that they have a contractor to deal with that. So I think you can get very specific in your regulations, make sure that these facilities do not, if you decide to opt in, if you decide that any one of these five uses will work for your community, you can tailor it to make sure that these facilities are not going to be a nuisance and not going to tax your public services. So that's my presentation in a nutshell. You know, I'll answer any questions that you have at the end.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. City Attorney Bloom, did you want to say anything at this point, or did you want to just open it up to questions and answers?
Yeah. Mayor, if I may, you know, Alan Motzney, Assistant City Attorney, is here with me today. And he actually did the presentation, as you recall, on April 24th of 2017. And at that point in time, there were a lot of ambiguities. For example, the emergency rules just came out December 4th. So the application just came out last Friday. The booklet just came out today. So this has been a constantly evolving area, and we've been monitoring it very closely. But I do just want to go back to, you know, I'm not, I have the presentation if you needed to look at it or to refer to it, but, you know, it's a political decision whether or not you decide to opt in. And there are five types of licensed facilities. You can decide to opt in to any of the five, or you can decide to not allow any of them. It is your call, what you want to do. If you do decide to opt in, however, I agree that there should be some significant ordinance provisions that would protect against potential nuisances. And I do just want to also clarify that it's a grower, a processor, safety compliance, provisioning center, and a secure transporter. And Ms. Edgerton had indicated before, Lara has decided since our last presentation that they will allow stacking. So for the grow operations, let's say you have a Class C and it's up to 1,500 plants, according to the rules that I have read, and perhaps it can be clarified, there are no limits to the amount that can be stacked together. So even though it's 1,500, the rules, at least the emergency rules that are, that have been distributed, do not set a limit for how many, how many grow operations can be stacked together. Similarly, there is no law prohibiting a combination. So you can have a grow operation, a processing operation, and a provisioning center all in the same location. So that is something that is slightly different from what we thought that the rules would be, and that has been clarified by rules that have been promulgated by Lara. And I did have, you know, just a couple of questions, and specifically, I was looking in, I know that council was provided with a copy of the rules, the emergency rules, in their packet. Also, I don't know, City Manager, did you want to touch on the map that was provided?
Well, we, yeah, sure. We have been asked, Mayor, at either the last meeting or the presentation, and if you just move that mouse, I think it would be helpful. But who's opted in, who's opted out? You have a map, we sent it out today, so you'd have a little preview because it's kind of hard to read, and the colors are hard, at least for me. So you have a map in front of you, and then you can zoom in here to see who's opted in, who's opted out, who's drafted an ordinance. You would ask us to provide that to you all. That's the best we can do at this time.
I have one question. Don't you, if you do nothing, that means you opt out, right? So how does someone explicitly, instead implicitly opt out? That's what I'm saying. What's the difference?
If you do nothing, you're, you've opted out.
Right. So what's the difference between the gray and the red then?
The gray, they haven't made a decision one way or the other. So potentially, they are opting out. But I will tell you that we get inquiries pretty frequently at the city of Troy. And so some of those communities that have expressly opted out, it is to send a message to those persons who would be interested in operating a business, that we're not going to have this in our city, and therefore, you may want to look to other communities. So that's, that's the difference. It's not required. If you don't do anything, it's not allowed. You cannot have facilities unless and until you adopt an ordinance that expressly allows those facilities to be in the city of Troy.
Okay. So do these communities have like a resolution or proclamation to claim this, or just word of mouth as they just were opting out?
I, I don't know. I'm guessing that they were ordinances, that, I'm guessing that it was something official. I don't.
Some of them had, I know from the MTA, they actually provided like a resolution that the boards could adopt so they could opt out if they so choose. They figured that way it takes pressure off the board members and, you know, the superintendent, supervisors there from all the phone calls. They'd say, no, we've adopted this, this is what we're doing. It's just kind of, but you don't, you're right. You don't have to do anything. And so it's kind of a mixed bag. Some of them are doing it because they don't want to take the calls anymore. Some of them are not doing anything yet, so they'll take the calls.
So those, those communities that opted out, those, they had facilities in there So those communities that opted out, those, they had facilities in their community, and so they were shut down immediately?
No, not necessarily. They just chose when the law was passed and the discussion of the locals, you know, whether you wanted to participate or not. Some of them just said, no, we're not doing this. So they went, took the action, adopted a resolution to say, we're not doing anything, whether they had to opt out. There's no, some of them know if they have facilities, some of them do not, but they won't be authorized for that. So they'll be operating however they operate under the current law, MMA law.
Yeah, I think that's the confusion that's out there is, some people think if you opt out that you have nothing.
Well, you opt out, I mean, but your current caregiver model still exists. So I think that's under the MMA, that that model still exists and will continue to exist. What some of them are doing is they're opting out of the current, the new legislation for allowing the marijuana facilities from a licensing perspective. So that's what they're taking the step to. They're recognizing that the caregiver model's still out there. People are still growing in their garages or the basements or wherever it might be, but they're not going to adopt something to allow, you know, safety facility, you know, and secure transporters in their bounds.
And another factor too, that counsel may wish to consider, is that under the facility, so I would call the facilities more of the commercial enterprises, and the caregiver model, again, you're limited in how many plants you can grow. So you can only grow a maximum of 72 plants as a caregiver, so that's under the MMMA. And so the rules for the facilities, if they decide to opt in into the facilities, there are prohibitions from them being caregivers and operating the commercial facilities at the same time, so.
It's one or the other.
For some of the licenses, yes. For some of the facilities licenses, that is correct.
I have two questions. One is, the green and the yellow, one is opted in drafting ordinance, and the other one is just drafting ordinance, probably a minor difference. What is the difference?
Well, I think one is they opted in, but they don't have an ordinance, right? That's what we hear is happening in places. And then the other is, they're just drafting the ordinance, and then they'll present it to council, we'll see if they opt in or opt out, opt in with the ordinance or not.
Ordinance first, right, okay. To that question is, if we opt out or do nothing, does that preclude us from doing something a year from now?
No. No, you're not precluded at a later date from opting in. However, if you do decide to opt in and you have facilities that are located in the city of Troy, then there are some property rights that are established. So that's something that you do need to consider, is once you opt in, there's going to be something that's going to be established in the city of Troy.
What do you mean by that? Lori, sorry, can you explain that a little further? What do you mean by that?
Once you opt in, again, assuming that counsel decides that they are going to be opting in, then those persons who file an application and actually get the licenses and are compliant with the city of Troy's ordinances are going to have some vested property rights.
So then if we then opted out after that?
You're going to have some of them that are going to remain because they have vested property rights.
Okay.
But Lori, can I correct you though? I don't want to interrupt you, but it's just another point to that. These licenses are privileges, they're not property rights, they're not proprietary. So people can lose them. So they might have an established property right that they'd have to, you know, because they invested in a building, they don't have a legal license to operate as a commercial entity under the Licensing Act, therefore, we would probably go after somebody for unlicensed activity. Because somebody sitting next to them that's licensed is not going to want somebody there unlicensed doing the same thing, the same business. And that's in the statute.
I would point out too, you need both local approval and state approval. And so if there's a problem with the facility, and you go through your process, you can revoke your local approval. You know, that's one of the, when I talk about local control, that's one of the things you can do. So if you opt in, you have existing facilities, they may have, and I agree with her about the land use right aspect of it, but that doesn't give them a right to, like, for example, if you rezone the property, they would have, it'd be illegal nonperforming use after that. But as to the license, if they're doing things unlawfully, and you can revoke your local approval, that license is gone. So, I mean, you would have the option of trying to revoke a license if somebody was acting outside the scope of the law, and you put that in your ordinance.
So you brought the number up, 55 cooperations in Troy, give or take, right? If we opt out or do nothing, and those 55 operations continue to do business, and maybe they can't find themselves competitive enough to be able to continue that business model because other communities nearby opted in and have bigger operations, what happens to those? I mean, do they just attrit, I mean, they just disappear out of the system? Do they have any legal recourse against the city because we allow them previously? What is your experience?
Well, my point was, I think that as time goes on, and you have 1,500 plant grows, and you have 72 plant grows under the old law here, I'm trying to see a way of how they can compete with that. And then after the 30-day period that's been established in the ordinance, in the rules, they can't get their product into the stream of the seed sales system. So there's a problem with them being part of this commercial licensing process throughout the state. If you don't have a commercial license for 1,500, 1,500 plants, how do you get your product into the stream of commerce for licensed facilities, for processing, for provisioning centers, all those things that are going on? They're all connected. There is an emergency rule that allows a 30-day period for caregivers to get certain product into the system, but after that point, let's go two years down the road, how are they going to compete with that? I think there's an economy and scale issue. And what they're going to end up having to do is, if they can't compete, they're just probably going to have to shut down. I don't see any recourse, legal recourse, if you just decide as a city not to opt in, and they can't compete. I just can't think of anything in terms of legal recourse there. But my point was that, you know, if this is working well for the city, you might want to consider that to allow these operators who have, let's say, done a good job or operated legally and been good neighbors in their area, allow them to continue. Another thing I wanted to point out too, in terms of, you know, you could decide just to do nothing, and you've not opted in, or you could pass a resolution opting out, but you could have these growers who are in the community or other interests come in and do a ballot proposal, and put it on the ballot next November, and they completely bypass you, and you could end up in the situation that Detroit's in now. They had an opt-in ballot proposal during the mayor's election, and it's a total mess. There's two lawsuits right now, they don't know how they're transitioning from their old ordinance to the new one. It's a mess. And they removed a lot of restrictions that were in the original ordinance, but if you sit down with people in the industry and you come up with something, I think you could eliminate the risk of a ballot proposal. They could do it through possibly charter amendment or an initiative proposal. So that's just something I wanted to point out as a possibility.
Counselor Baker?
This might be a, well, it's a question, I'm still, I'm trying to understand some of the process for all of this, but when you're talking about competition, I'm having a hard time reconciling the idea of a commercial grower with 1,500 plants and a caregiver who can grow six plants for him or herself, and six plants, or 12 plants, I'm sorry, 12 plants, and 12 plants for five other patients. Where's the competition? If you have, I don't, I guess I don't understand the process well enough at that basic level, what we have now with the caregiver operations. And our, obviously, it's sold, and they're not doing it for free, but is the fear of competition from, I guess, your side of it, that those caregivers won't be able to support their business for the five patients that they have because it'll be easier for the patients to go to something licensed and bigger? Is that what it is?
It's more, the caregiver model exists. So the assumption is, if you're growing 72 plants, you know, you have your five patients, and that's who you deal with. The assumption is, when you go to a commercialized market, a regulated market like that, the patient is free to go wherever they choose. So they're not tied to that particular caregiver. So now it comes into marketing, branding, the dispensary stores that are very nice-looking, they can go in and they can get whatever they want. They just need to show their card and seek the limit. That puts a damper on the relationship maybe with a caregiver who's maybe only able to supply, you know, flour, you know, that's all they've been able to get. But now they can go wherever and they can get, you know, their oil or whatever they might want to get. It becomes a, I'm not saying that it's not going to exist, but the potential for the caregiver model to lessen is really great because of the commercialization, and you can go wherever you want to go as a caregiver. Otherwise, you're tied to that caregiver.
Got you, thank you.
I hear all the regulations, the rules. Who does the enforcing? Who does this tracking? Who keeps this safe and in order? Let's say we opted in, how does that happen?
So under the licensing program, if you are, all of the product has to be tracked, from the grow stage all the way through a harvest stage, all the way through maybe a processor who's going to turn it into an extracted oil, who's then is going to turn it into a food product, to the provisioning center who's going to sell it at a point of sale. That plant genesis there at the start is tracked all the way through the system, and at each step, everyone is required, under the law and under the rules, to follow the steps to put it into the system. The system is pretty intuitive in sense of, you know, you have 500 plants, and then all of a sudden something happens, and you don't have a disposal where 250 of your plants are gone, but yet all of a sudden 250 of your plants are missing. The system is intuitive to recognize that. And so the state will step in and say, we recognize you, all of a sudden you have a loss of plants, you know, what's going on? Send out and do an inspection or investigation. So from a diversion standpoint, for there. So all of that is tracked all the way through the system. That is the state's monitoring system. That is also available to law enforcement. And the state will use that for tracking as we go in for inspections, investigations. And we can go in on a random, it's not like we have to have a complaint to go in. I mean, we can just go in on a inspection basis and look at, you know, the, any of the licensees. You know, licensees are paying a lot of money to become licensed. I mean, not only at the local level, which, you know, is up to the 5,000, but, you know, they're going to pay 6,000 out of the gate for a background check. Some of these licensees, you know, depending on what that market's going to look like at the end of the day, you know, might pay up to 57,000 of a regulatory fee, you know, for that license. You know, compliance is going to be huge. There's a, people want to be in compliance in this, if you're spending that kind of money. And if you put your money forward for capitalization, and you've just bought a building, and you've just spent to put a sprinkler system in, to make sure you have the proper egress, and, you know, you did your building permits, you did all that, you've got a lot of money invested in something to have, you know, kind of some foolishness of like, oh, I'm going to try to divert a little plan over here. Because if we catch it in the system, which we will, then we will, we can suspend your license, we can revoke your license. And so you will have just spent all that money, just, you know, for basically, you know, somebody to be stupid. And so that's where some of the safeguards are. You know, and it goes through the whole process, safety facility and testing, all of it has to be tested, you know, from the grow to the processor to the provisioning center. We're testing at each and every level to make sure that it's accurate. You know, people don't want to buy something, if you're buying like a candy bar, you don't want one piece to have all the THC level in it and everything else, just basically be milk chocolate. So there has to be, and the rules are there regarding the homogeneity, but all of that goes through the system.
But is there, it's going to take people to monitor that?
Well, which is the state level. I mean, that's what we, that's what we have staff for, that's what we're hiring for. But the licensees are also required to be into the system. They have to go out, they can get their third-party vendor, whomever they want to, they can do it themselves. But they have to sign into the statewide monitoring system once you're licensed. And so we will know immediately where the licensees are located, what they have, and how that product is being tracked through the system. That's at the state, that's the state system.
Okay.
And then if you're talking about enforcement, obviously, we're talking about, you know, obviously, we will work with the locals, but we anticipate having, you know, our own inspection and investigation teams, as well as working with MSP and then local law enforcement to get those issues taken care of.
And actually, there is, and that is one of the things that I did notice in the emergency rules, a lot of references are to the MSP and to the department, not a lot of references to our local law enforcement. And so, in fact, a lot of these local law enforcement, the specific exclusion of them would mean that they are not authorized to do a lot of enforcement.
Yeah, but I think in the statute itself, it's authorized.
But these are the rules that we're dealing with.
But I think, you know, overall, I mean, we're all working and trying to walk down this path together to figure out how this is. I would love to be able to have the answers for everything, but that's certainly not the case. But, I mean, the anticipation is that the people will complain to local law enforcement, a neighbor, you know, a resident, they're going to say, hey, I'm going to call up the, you know, local sheriff, I'm going to call up my local law enforcement. Then we're going to have to trigger as to what that goes on. Or hotline into the state that says, we think somebody's operating illegally over here because we don't see any licenses or anything when we walk into the store. So, I mean, we will work with law enforcement, and it will be local as well, because obviously we can't do everything.
Can I just piggyback on Counselor Monhorix? One of the things we're hearing from our police is, in today's world, they don't have the ability to inspect, and it's tying their hands in today's world to enforce issues that are going on. And it would be, I think, important to know that local, you know, we're the ones that are going to be responsible, pretty much, for handling complaints. So is there an assurance from the state that the local authorities are going to have the ability to go in and inspect anytime they want, just as, just as the state police? Or some sort of authorization for?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I know it's directed within the statute, it's not specified in the rules to that extent, but I mean, the board can authorize any agents and officers to work on behalf of the board, so it's not any different than if we delegated authority to that. I think part of our problem is, is we just don't know what we're going to be faced with. I mean, we kind of joke about, are we getting 50 applications on Fri, this Friday, or are we getting 5,000 applications? And what does that look like? Is that, you know, all of these facility types, is it, you know, just a few of the same facility types over and over, so it's a repetitive behavior pattern? But certainly something, you know, we want to work with and be partners with locals that are investing in this time and effort-wise. But we would, you know, obviously, and the MSP's not going to have the manpower, so we're going to have to turn to local law enforcement. I think, you know, part of our problem is just getting these people into the regulated area and making sure that it's consistent. And I think that's, and not to say that we won't allow people to go in and inspect and do that, but I think part of the problem starting now is if the state is getting in there, then locals are coming in there, it can add confusion for them. And so we just need to get the program up and running and see where our weaknesses are, to be honest, and then start to do that, those kind of questions.
Sure. Now, my position on this would be, if it's not related to purity and quality, if the state can do it, city can do it. Why can't you, as part of your local approval? Some cities are requiring a local license before you get a state license. So there's two licenses that get sort of married together to allow you to operate. And so with the local license, why couldn't you and your local ordinance adopt the same rule and say that, you know, whatever it says, I don't have in front of me, that the police are allowed to enter? It's almost like implied consent. You have this license, and because of the type of use it is, the police will be allowed to enter and inspect. I mean, it's, if the state can do it, I don't see why the city can't. Like I said, Lansing has given the locals all the power here, except as to purity and quality, so.
Mayor, if I could tell you more.
To follow up on your question, Mayor, one of the things that had been discussed at our study session in April was that if a community were to opt in, there would be some level of funding that comes from the state to allow for additional law enforcement. Can you speak more about what that model of funding might look like?
Well, in the act itself, is, there is a formula designated by statute, I'm just looking, in regards to the regulatory assessment that comes through. And the breakout, this is the excise fund, this is the three, where the money comes from, from the 3% excite, the 3% tax. 25% to municipalities in which a marijuana facility is located, allocated in proportion to the municipal facilities. 30% to the counties, 5% to the counties, again, to be used to support county sheriffs, and then 30% to the state to help with, and basically 5% to state police. So there's no designation to local unless you're viewing it only as the sheriffs. I mean, you will get a percentage, I mean, that's, it's, I wouldn't, in all of the numbers that we've kind of looked at, I mean, and sometimes people just pull them off their head, I mean, this is just one pot of money, and we don't know exactly what that pot of money looks like. And if everybody, every county, every municipal goes in there, that pot shrinks because it's by a program of share. So even that, it's not a windfall. I'll just tell you that. I've told communities that, it's not a windfall. It's not going to be a windfall. But there's not going to be a direct line correlation where you send a bill to the state and say, hey, we were out on three investigations for the and say, "Hey, we were out on three investigations for this marijuana facility type, you know, pay us what that mon-" that's not going to happen. There is some money that comes to the locals, but it's not, I wouldn't say it's necessarily significant, based upon the facility types you have.
And I know the 3%, obviously, from the provisioning center. I didn't see any of the, any specifics in the emergency rules that dealt with how you're going to figure out how that money was going to be allocated, and whether it was going to be allocated if you had, for example, if you allowed just grow facilities.
Right.
Would you be eligible for that? And that would, I didn't see that addressed in the emergency rules.
No, no. Because we're, we're taking that by statute to figure out when we get the regulatory assessment, and that really is dictated by Treasury. So, Treasury is because of, via the statute, and the funds and everything are in Treasury. So, I would imagine it'll be a report that we will send to Treasury that says, "Here's the communities that have opted in, here's the, because we'll have the list of how many licensees are in each community." That'll be the information based upon what they collect in the 3%. Be mindful, 3% goes away if recreational comes in as well. So, that pot of money will fall if recreational is passed in 18.
Just my little two cents, I don't think we should be making a decision based on a windfall, or whether it's a windfall or not. And my experience with relying on the state of Michigan, no offense to the state of Michigan...
Not taken. I've been a local official, so not taken.
You know, they owe us a lot of money today, and, so, to me, you shouldn't be looking at it from that perspective, but that's just my opinion. I think Councilman Hamilton.
Mayor Proton Abraham did mostly cover my last question. I guess my question might be for City Attorney Bloom. If a citizen initiative, we're experienced with that now in the city, because you're, were to pass, of what, I remember reading the charter, would we have to wait six months before we could do anything to it, or how does that work? Because that is not, I mean, if we do nothing, they could ask the citizen initiative and do it anyway.
Yeah, obviously, that, there is a risk of that. And at this point in time, there are two recreational proposals that are, you know, being circulated for November of, of 2018. So, a lot of, of things could happen. But, you know, obviously, you all received the, the MML's, Michigan Medical Marijuana Facilities Opt-In/Opt-Out Consideration Document. And of course, that was one of the things that was specified, is that there, that is an argument of the industry, is that there will be referendums coming in, or initiation, initiated charter amendments, or ordinance. I, I don't see it as a charter amendment in the city of Troy, but it is possible. I don't know. If it's an ordinance, then they would have an ordinance that they would be proposing, and then you would have a chance to decide whether or not you wanted to adopt that ordinance, or if, if you wanted to amend that ordinance, if they had the requisite number of signatures.
And then, if we shoot it down, it goes to vote of the people, right?
Again, if you, if, if it's a charter amendment, and they meet the qualifications, I, I don't know what that would be, but yes, that would go to a vote of the people, potentially, if they, if they meet the signature requirements. It's, it's always a possibility.
To dovetail off that, if, that was one of my questions, if, if an amendment, a charter amendment comes our way about initiative, it gets passed, then do we still have the opportunity to write an ordinance?
Yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's an ordinance, and they have the ordinance, and that is approved by the people, then, then that's pretty much going to be your ordinance. Now, you may have some ability to add some additional nuisance protections to it, as well, in, in other areas. So, so, the answer is, I don't know exactly. Yeah.
And, and I've got a question for you, so maybe we can answer both from one shot, but, shoot, what was it? Licensing. You said, you know, we could license within the city. Can we charge for that license?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Any amount?
No.
No, I mean, it has to be...
Not any amount.
No, I mean, you can charge a nice amount, but it has to be proportionate. What else can I add about the charter?
Proportion to what, though?
You know, the cost incurred by the city, with the inspections and everything else that goes along with, you know, just like any other licensing would issue. If you were to issue licenses for, let's say, pawnbrokers, you can't just charge any amount. The law dictates that you have to, you know, it has to be in proportion with your costs.
Okay.
With the maximum?
Yes.
Of $5,000.
With the maximum of $5,000.
Maximum is $5,000.
Yeah. I want to point out about the charter provision is, the Home Rule City Act, which, you know, would govern here in Troy, someone could get a charter amendment with 5% of registered voters. I don't know how many registered voters you have, it might be, what, 90, 100,000, or...
56,000.
What's that?
56,000.
56,000, so round up to 60,000 signatures. That's not a lot. 3,000 signatures to get a charter amendment on the ballot.
We just went through that.
Okay, so.
Very familiar.
So, I apologize. So, but, like you were asking, what, what are your options? Let's say someone gets a signature, puts it on the ballot. The council could put their own ballot proposal, a competing ballot proposal, and whichever proposal got more votes, if they were in conflict, would prevail. So, I mean, there's not like you don't have an out, but...
We've been through that, too.
Could I just ask you a question? Some of the reasons that, reasons that we waited to have our educational meeting now was we were waiting for Lansing, for the rules to come out, and, I mean, we knew we were getting close to the December 15th deadline, and we didn't, I think as a collective body, we didn't want to hurt the industry if we were going to opt-in or opt-out. We wanted to make a decision by the 15th, so that the business community would know what, what we're doing. But what I think I'm hearing today is, it doesn't, the 15th really doesn't matter right now. There's no emergency reason, other than it would be nice for the businesses to know where, where we're going. But are you going to get penalized in the application process if a city opts in earlier than another city opts in, and you put your license in before somebody else does?
No, there's no penalty. There's a...
Are you going to be falling behind?
No, I mean, I think, you know, I think everybody's under the impression, if you're first in line, you get the first license. That's not how you do licensing. Licensing is a completed application, and that can mean a lot of things to different people in a different level of licensing that we have. So, like I said, we recognized early on, when a lot of municipalities were not adopting ordinances, that we needed to do something that would allow or take some pressure off, you know, industry and maybe municipalities, by saying, "You can come, you can be pre-qualified." What you won't have is that, that municipal authority, which would be kind of a second step in this process, before you pay your regulatory fee, and then, you know, you have the authority to operate. So, for some, you know, there's some that were early adopters, in County, and there's been a few of them that are, well, I'll say, really early adopters right on the get-go in, in 17. But it, there's no rush. I mean, it's, it's not a penalty. You know, if you're talking about the provisioning center, the dispensary issues, then obviously, there's some timeframes in there for people to operate, where having that authorizing ordinance is, is critical, but it doesn't sound like you have those there, you have grow operations. So, December 15th comes and goes. I mean, there are a lot of people, we've heard a lot of people that are going to apply, and are like, "Yeah, we're going to wait until January." You know, we're, we're not in a hurry, because the, the place we want to go, they're in the process of adopting an ordinance, so we'll put our application in closer to when they've got, you know, the adoption done. So, it can be all together in one application, but you're not penalized. The only thing you're penalized in is, in this process is, you know, at some point, you have to have your application completed and go forward. But these are one-year licenses, so at some point, you'd want to, you know, end the cycle and, and be done, and actually acquire a license, but no penalties.
And I think, am I hearing that if you, if there is a decision to opt-in, you should do an ordinance first?
I would strongly recommend that you do, because number one, it provides some assurances as to what protections are going to be for the public, if, if you do decide to opt-in. Also, you know, I guess you want to be able to, you know, there are some negative consequences. For example, there is an odor, you want to be able to make sure that that odor does not extend beyond the facility, and that there's appropriate exhaust and things like that. So, your ordinance should take care of all of those types of things. I don't know if I completely agree that we have carte blanche, as far as what we can put in our licensing, and that we, you know, that, that, that we wouldn't be sued by the, the one person who doesn't get the license. I think that, that we, there, there is some risk for the city, even in adopting it. If we do regulate it extensively, that, you know, that, that there may be lawsuits brought by unsuccessful persons, if, if you limit the number.
And if we don't opt-in, we would still be best to have an ordinance, correct?
If you don't opt-in, there are certain things that we feel that we can now have in Troy's ordinances that protect for, under the MMMA, so that's the caregiver model. And one of those is the ability for local law enforcement to get into those facilities, and we feel like we can now put that in an ordinance. And that is something that if you decide not to opt into the facilities, the commercial entities, that we would recommend revisions to our ordinance for the caregiver operations.
Councilman Pennington.
So, I got a couple of questions, actually. One is for Jeff. So, Jeff, you've been dealing with some of these organizations that, or cities had opted in. Are there facilities now that have 1,500 plants growing? I mean, that just...
No, no. They can't until they have a state license. In the state license, you can't even submit your application until Friday of this week. The only legal operating grow facilities now would have caregivers with 72 plant maximum.
Well, so you've seen, what, what does that look like, though? So, you've seen some kind of plans, what they...
Yeah.
Is that one facility, or is that multiple buildings, or...
Well, I've only been to a couple of facilities. I haven't been doing a lot of touring of the grow facilities, but, yeah, I mean, I guess you could have multiple caregivers in one location, you know, provided everything else is up to code. So, each caregiver should have 72 plants.
So, then, the question I had for Lori was, if we do opt-in, could we regulate that amount of plants, or is it up to 1,500? I mean, that's just...
Okay, so, so you can still have, you cannot prohibit persons from having, I'll say, up to 72. So, you can't prohibit them from being caregivers.
Right.
So, that's limited to 72, assuming that they have, that they are a patient themselves, and they have five persons who they are the caregiver for. So, that's the maximum if you do not opt into the commercial facilities. If you decide that you're going to opt into the commercial facilities, then you can have significantly larger enterprises of up to, well, in fact, I mean, it's 1,500, but you can stack, so it's not just that, you can...
That's what I'm asking, can we regulate that?
You don't have to allow that. You could also, potentially with an ordinance, you could say, "We're only going to allow one." You could say, "We're not going to allow stacking," potentially, I think that that would be, would be approved. So, you could, you know, disallow stacking. I think you could also disallow having the grower, processor, and provisioning center together. I, I think, although I'm not sure, the, the Rule 24 is ambiguous.
You could, the point was to allow for stacking, and we called it vertical integration, because there are some people that want to come in and be the grower, they want to be their own processor, and then they want to sell their stuff at their, their own provisioning center store. There are a lot of municipalities that have vacant buildings, vacant industrial buildings, that said, "We're going to allow you to be there all the way forward," because industrial is one of the areas in which grows are allowed. You can be there, and then, we, we want you to sell on the front, in some office space, for example, you know, just sell on the front, because then it's all contained in an area that's not on Main Street. We've heard a lot of locals say that. Laura's right, you can, you could limit, you could limit, you know, if you only want Class A growers with a 500, you know, plant count, you can limit that. If you only want two of them, you know, and that's all you want to have in the city, you know, you can limit that. I mean, you can limit whatever numbers you want in terms of the actual licenses, and then you can also prohibit, you know, the stacking. So, you don't want to amend, you, you allow 1,500 grow plants, but you don't want, you know, the 4,500 grow plants, you know, in a 50,000 square foot building, you know, whatever the size of it will take. So, you, you have those abilities to, to regulate a lot of that. And, and to Laura's point about, you know, even like the odor, I mean, the state, in the emergency rules, we didn't have time to get into, I call them the time, place, manner regulations, the odor, the advertisement, you know, time of operations, all those. I mean, there is the expectation the locals will do that in their ordinances. If in the formal rules, in the next stage, in the next half, as we start this program, we start doing, you know, requiring odor mitigation for anybody that gets a license, you know, those things will come from the state as well. But in the meantime, the locals need to do what they need to do, you know, to, to just point about, you know, adopt stuff in your ordinances, because we're not there yet at this point. And we may not get there for a year, you know, 15 months or two years, by the time we do regular rules. In the meantime, you know, these folks are operating within your municipal bounds, and you need to do what's best for your, your constituents.
So, the good news is, is we have local control. The bad news is, is we have the responsibility of the local control, and of tackling our ordinances to meet our local municipality. I mean, it's two-way, because it's a significant responsibility to take on in that regard. I'm just processing that. Yay, we can control it, but we also have to have that language, we have to, and we go through this process. Let's say we opt-in, we have our ordinances, and then the recreational goes on the ballot and passes. Does that blow this all out of the water? What happens then? Or if the feds change something, what happens?
That's a, you know, it's anybody's crystal ball, I think, at that point. So, I mean, the rec, you know, the proposal language for the rec market is, is there is some regulatory nature to it. There's also a 10, 10% excise tax on it, so it's not just the free-for-all. I think you could see some medical go away, because people just invest their time and energy in the recreational. I think you have an expansion of, of the smaller caregiver grows, which could go into the micro business, which is 150 plants. So, there's, there's some, you know, there's some real cons to it, and, you know, maybe the, the folks that are in medical, who already have their building set up, now go recreational, which is just a different regulatory, you know, that we still come in, you're still tracking, you're still doing some of that collection of the taxes, but you're just not on the medical side.
I guess from a land use perspective, I look at it this way. If you license somebody for a medical marijuana operation in your city, and at the end of this process, they have a license, and they have a CMO, and the CMO says, "It's for medical marijuana," how do they come in and say, "Well, we're going to flip the sign on the front of the building to say, 'We're now recreational.'" I just see if the land use is restricted locally to medical marijuana, they're going to have an issue flipping. Although, in reality, it really affects mostly, I believe, the provisioning centers, because the provisioning centers will only allow individuals with cards, medical marijuana cards, to come get their medicine. How does this affect a processor? How does this affect a 1,500 plant grow operation? The real issue is, at the retail level, because you'll have more people who are able to come in, they might not need a card, they might not, they might just need their ID to show they're over a certain age. So, I would, I would look at it from the land use to say that, if you adopt an ordinance to say, "This is specifically for medical marijuana use," your CMO will say, "This is a medical marijuana facility," and put the city in the best position to protect itself against, you know, people saying, "Well, I suddenly have a, a land use right to be in the recreational realm," when that's not necessarily the case. So, and I think it affects provisioning centers most than, than the other operations.
Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to mention about the transportation licenses, I didn't get this out earlier, was that they're not just driving around, waiting for someone to call them, they have to file a manifest with the state. So, they can't just take off in the morning and not know where they're going. They have to file a manifest, it's like a, a plan of where they're going to go for the day, where they're picking up, where they're dropping off, what they're picking up, what they're dropping off. That's all part of the statewide monitoring system. That just goes to the point of how much detail the state is going to have about every movement of every piece of product in the system.
Similar to like a flight plan?
Like a flight plan, a manifest, yeah. You have to file it, and you have to follow it. And, you know, if you're, you're on a diversion from that, the system's going to be aware of that, and you, you know, it better be, you know, gallbladder surgery or something.
Mayor Proton, Mr. Abraham.
We'll take it back off of something Councilwoman Hodrick said. Let's suppose that the city does opt in and we create a local ordinance that aligns with the emergency rules that exist today. Let's say in a year, a new set of rules comes out, because now we're a year smarter and there are more things that we've determined that we want to have rules on. Would we have to go back or would it be advisable to relook at the ordinances if the state's rules become more stringent than the local ordinance?
Oh, I think it's definitely a fluid process. It's been a very fluid process, and I think if the state, in fact, again, I think that there are a lot of ambiguities, a lot of things that aren't really covered under these emergency rules. So I'm hoping that there are some changes, because, you know, again, I'm not sure that the municipalities are adequately protected, and I'm, and I don't see that there is really a role for the municipal police law enforcement to be involved in that. But yes, in answer to your question, yes, it would be fluid, it would be advisable to go back at that point in time. Now, those entities that have licenses, however, you know, whether or not you can retroactively modify their licenses is the other issue.
So it's, there's a possibility that they could be grandfathered under the old rules or the old ordinance?
Again, it depends. It's possible.
So is the 5,000 max we can charge, is that per license or per facility?
That is per license.
Okay, and I want to ask Police Chief Mayor, do you think that would be adequate to cover the enforcement costs? Or is it an economies of scale thing, or if we had 10, we could do it, 5,000 for 10 licenses would be 50,000, that'd be enough. But if we just did one, would $5,000 be enough to cover the cost of enforcement? Maybe after an initial learning period and then we get more used to it? How do you feel on that? Or does it depend on the type of facility, too?
It's a multifaceted question. It depends on the nature with the, with the local ordinance that's approved by city councils, and what the expectation of what we're going to do is. If we're going to get involved in working with the state on the tracking methods and do inspections and do look at all the different things, that obviously increases the amount of manpower and the staffing level that we have to have. If it's similar to what we do now with liquor licensing, we do liquor licensing, that's just part of an officer's job, it's part of their daily routine. So it's difficult for me to answer, because I don't know what our involvement would be. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a black, it's a black box. Do, why is there the cap on it at 5,000? Why not just make it whatever costs are for the city to do their enforcement mechanism?
What's your legislator's phone number? This is, this is, let's make part of the-
That's in the-
That's in the, yeah.
That's in the-
But again, these facilities too, they'll be, they're going to be paying property taxes to the city, to the schools, to the county. There's personal property taxes. So there's going to be other sources of revenue from these facilities other than just the license fee.
Potentially, but there may also be, you know, the industrial facility, if it's an agricultural facility, there may be changes to the assessed value as well. So, so the amount of revenue is not a guarantee as well from the property taxes, so that should also be a warning consideration.
Yeah, that's something I'm concerned about, is this going to be just on a cost basis for the city?
I add one more comment because of that last comment, but, you know, the tax revenue that we get doesn't matter whether it's a marijuana grow operation or a machine shop. In my book, that means nothing to us. And to dovetail off something that Councilwoman Hodrick mentioned, it's, and I wrote this down early on based off what Mr. Schroeder had mentioned, but it's a constantly changing industry, right? We'll have to stay way ahead of this. You know, the changes can happen, well, we're not even paying that much attention to it, honestly. You know, we're not a full-time body. We're all part-time, we have a lot of work ahead of us in our real jobs, and now we have to pay attention to the minutia in this, this particular industry. So that gives me a lot of, a lot of anxiety and reason for pause. But the two questions I had, one is if we opt out, this is for Lori, if we opt out, do we have to extend the moratorium that we have, or, you know, how do we keep down to 55? And then the other one is federally, I know it's, it's controlled substance, right? So how do we, what is this industry, how does this dovetail with the federal regulations? How do grow operators get involved in this without having the scrutiny of that? We already have one grow facility in Troy get popped and stripped of all their plants. So, you know, how do we, how does that work?
Medical marijuana is illegal under federal law, but there was a Supreme Court case in Michigan that said the Michigan Medical Marijuana Law is not preempted by federal law, but it's still illegal. So that's all they get around it, is that was, the Supreme Court said we could have Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. But as you've indicated, if federal government decided to all of a sudden start enforcing the Controlled Substance Act, all of this could become illegal if that choice is ever made. So that's, that's a possibility. With regard to the other question, if the city opts out of the commercial facilities, the city would still, would have to end the moratorium at some point. We can't keep the moratorium, because people under the Medical Marijuana Act can be caregivers and can have grow operations. Part of the moratorium is to determine whether or not we want to pass some new regulations just based on the caregiver operations. So at some point, we have to end that moratorium.
But again, you should treat them both separately. You have your caregiver operations under the M M M A, and, and so you should, that's separate from the Facilities Act under the M M M A.
Right, we're going to handle it regardless.
Right, so, yes.
How do we keep from going from 55 to 75? Because it happened overnight that we got 55, right?
It did. And, and as I had earlier alluded to, one of the things that we would like to do is to, before the moratorium expires, is to make some proposed ordinance revisions, so that there are added protections for the community with that. So that will be coming to you regardless of whether or not you opt in. Whatever your decision is on the facilities, that's, that's coming to you before the moratorium expires. Now, as far as whether or not, there may be caregivers who decide that they would rather do a commercial operation, and they may decide that that is something that they would rather do in, if it's in Troy, then you opt in, then that's part of consideration. There are other communities also that may be opting in, and so they may decide that it's more beneficial for them to operate a larger commercial establishment, whether that's in Troy or another community.
Mr. Schroeder?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on the federal, which is a great question, and this has come up everywhere that I've visited, and I just wanted to add a couple of things. Number one, the U.S. Attorney General in the Department of Justice is operating under a policy now that they will not enforce federal marijuana laws in states that have medical marijuana laws that incorporate a robust regulatory scheme, such as what we have here. So the Attorney General, Department of Justice, is hands-off right now. Now, of course, tomorrow, they could, you know, write a new memo and decide to enforce it. However, the United States Congress and their appropriation to DOJ this year, and they just extended it, has said to DOJ that you do not, they, we have not appropriated any funds, however they do their appropriations, for enforcement of medical marijuana in states with these laws. And Michigan is specifically listed as one of the states in the appropriation bill. Do not spend, you do not have funds to spend on enforcement in these states. So two things, their internal policy, Congress has taken funding away. We talked about a place here in Troy that got in trouble. Well, this only applies if everyone's following the rules and regulations. If you have a facility that is operating outside the scope of the law, call the feds, bring them in, let them bust at the place, let them bring drug trafficking charges. That's, that's fair game. And so the feds have not said that they won't go after those facilities, the ones that are not operating within the scope of the law. But those who are following the law, and those states like Michigan that have a robust regulatory scheme, they're hands-off right now. So I can't imagine what type of reaction there would be if tomorrow, they just said, here you go, go after everyone, I mean, 30 states with all these facilities. I just don't know how they would do it, but right now, they're protected.
Is there a maximum amount of licenses that will be approved for the state, or is it?
It's unlimited.
Unlimited, okay. And do we know how many Troy residents have medical marijuana cards?
No, because unfortunately, we don't have access to the listing.
We don't have, but I think you can do, I don't know-
I have a county-
As I say, you can probably do it by county.
Yeah.
There's a county breakdown.
I just have to find the right slide.
Every county's, I would go for some grant money, so there's a county amount.
Because one thought I have is, does this, if we were to allow this, would this make it easier for Troy residents to get their municipal marijuana? Instead of having to go down to Detroit or wherever else facilities are, better and safer for them to have it here.
Yeah, so I have some data from, oh, Oakland County that said that in 2016, so this is over a year old, there were 24,461 registered patients in the county, as opposed to 11,117 in 2012, which was 120% increase. So that was one of the issues of why the legislature passed this law, is the caregiver model couldn't support the exponential growth throughout the state. In fact, other communities have seen larger growth than Oakland County, but the model couldn't hold the amount of, support the amount of patients that were registered.
So that's about 2,000 if you divide Troy's population by county's population. I don't know if that matches, does that be about 2,000?
And that's about, that data's a little over a year old.
Yeah, and if we pass this, I imagine it's going to go higher.
I think I read yesterday, quarter of a million for the state of Michigan is the number that I saw.
That would match.
The study session this evening was to educate council. We won't be voting on whether to opt in or opt out. We can't vote in a, in a study session, no matter what. But I appreciate the input, I think it's really good to educate. I don't know if we need to do more of it, but are there any last questions before we ask for public comment this evening?
Can we make statements?
Pardon me?
Can we make statements?
Do I make a statement before or after the public comment?
Do it after public comment.
We are going to, I think at some point, get to a city council meeting where you're going to be able to give comment as to whether you vote to opt in or opt out or pass a resolution. So there will be an opportunity to do that, once you're completely educated, so.
This might be more of a question or discussion point, is what are our next steps? Now that we've had this study session, where do you think we want to go?
That was a question I was going to ask after we listen to public comment. The way I see it, we can go to the next council meeting and take a vote on whether we want to pass a resolution, whether we want to opt in or opt out. We can do that the next one. We can say it'd be nice to, to get an ordinance drafted before we take that step, and I would think that the city attorney would probably recommend that, I think that's what I've heard. So we could direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance, one way or the other. Or continue to educate yourself.
Crafting of an ordinance, if we so direct, would be to address the 55 locations we have currently, is that?
No. I mean, that, that's going to happen anyway, so I don't, I think that I have heard from all of you, and I think I have consistent direction for that. Where we will need direction is whether or not there is a majority of city council that wants us to spend the time to, you know, to do an ordinance for opting in. And so that's why it would be very helpful to give that direction.
So once that direction's given, I can take, kind of, tell the public what you're going to do. Councilman here?
Brief comment, yeah, there's such a wide range of what we can do. We could say one facility, just to grow up, no provisioning, or we could do, you know, 100, which we're going to do. I'm just saying, we, it's a wide range of what we can do, or nothing. So directing that ordinance is going to be a long process, I anticipate, because there's just such a range of what our options are, and the regulations we can bring out.
I agree, I think if you do one, you have to do the ordinance, you do, no matter what, so. Any other comments from council before we open it up to public comment? First, I'll call on Nancy Morrison.
Good evening, ladies later and council members.
Three minutes, please, and use your microphone.
Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am the Executive Director of the Troy Community Coalition for the Prevention of Drug and Alcohol Abuse, and I am very proud of the prevention work that we do. And I always keep our youth in mind, you know, my ideal world would that, would be that our children would grow up drug-free. And right now, research shows us that one in six teens will end up in treatment for marijuana. I'm hearing rumors now that children are coming to school smelling like marijuana. I am very concerned about the medibles. We hear stories of children ending up in the emergency room for the medibles. And I just saw a video of a dog getting into his owner's medible, and so this dog was suffering, his tongue was hanging out of his mouth, and the owner was not sure what to do. So these are all things that might come up. Right now, 53.4% of 11th graders are reporting that it's very easy to obtain marijuana, and that is without the provisioning centers right here in Troy. And this is Troy data from the Michigan Profile for Healthy Youth, that's administered every two years in the Troy School District. And ninth graders report that they started using marijuana when they were 12.5 years old, and that continues to get younger and younger all the time. So please consider all these things before you make an option, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Eric Need.
I've been here longer than that. Oh, yeah, thank you, Nurse Slater and, and the council here. Again, my name is Eric Need. I was raised here in Troy, kindergarten from Schroeder all the way to Troy High graduating. After that, I moved out to Colorado, to Boulder, Colorado, I went to school and where I currently reside. And about two years ago, my business partner Jeff and I bought a 100,000 square foot building here in Troy to outfit and, and to lease to caregivers, with the idea of building kind of a substantial, responsible building in place. And in preparation for this meeting here today, I contracted a PhD researcher to look at kind of a comparative study between Boulder, Colorado, and Troy in terms of population, income, drug use, et cetera, and see how the demographics changed. Colorado was kind of a leading indicator for Michigan, because Colorado got started five years ago, or going back even further, 10, 15 years ago with the medical side. So it's kind of a, while it feels very new and timely here, it's actually kind of a, somewhat of a well-worn path that a lot of states have gone through in the past, and to share some of that research with you. In the past, I've heard a lot of concerns about, about crime and drug use in schools, and both on City Online, on the YouTube videos from the council meetings. And, and I agree that it's something that you need to pay attention to. And right now, I've got a nine-year-old in school, and I'm receptive to that conversation very much as well. But really, the facts of the actual stats speak to much larger truth. In Colorado, underage use actually dropped in Colorado after legalization. And both violent crime and property crime decreased at the same time, as total tax revenue generated by the city of Boulder was up $4.7 million, actually not up, but $4.7 million attributable specifically to marijuana taxes. And that's just through November of 2016, so over about $5 million annualized. Oh, thank you. And that's not a windfall, that's actual sustainable profit. So I guess in summary, is that the realities of what is actually out there on the other stats exceeds kind of the fear and the, kind of the worst vigilations you have come to mind as, as you think about this. And also, one last thing is, you know, going through the economic cycles and what Troy experienced back in, in the late 2000s, is that the tax and revenue from this is very non-cyclical. So when the economy tanks again, we, you know, economy goes through the traditional economic cycles, is the marijuana money is a stable income source, and if it's $5 million just on the sales tax, let alone increases in occupancy and real estate tax, that's a substantial buffering against any future recessions. So, anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Tina Yancy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for taking time to- Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Thank you for taking time to have this special meeting. I know this is something that weighs on a lot of our minds. I'm a building owner in Troy, and my family has done business here for over 30 years. I would just ask that council, take time like you did tonight, and consider the benefits that this will bring to the community. Regulation always, in my personal opinion, brings less crime, more revenue, better safety. Put these, you know, systems in place that the state is currently working on to, to put it to use for Troy, rather than just close our doors and say, no, we're not going to do it. It's going to be there. People, just to echo what Ms. Edgerton said, people are investing a lot of money into hopefully securing state licenses. We are not individuals who are approaching this from a really flippant, hey, we're growing in our basement type attitude. We want this to be successful. We want to follow the rules. We want to really be a benefit to the community as opposed to a nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Tenniswood.
Good evening. Jeff Tenniswood, 35-year resident of Troy, grew up here. My family lives here. I have two children that go to Troy High. I am business partners with Eric. We didn't buy a 100,000 square foot building, it was a 10,000 square foot building. My family began building light industrial buildings in Troy in 1974. It was our first one. We now have, we have approximately 175,000 square feet of light industrial multi-tenant space. I currently have eight caregivers that are very good tenants, very clean, pay their rent on time, play by the rules. Initially, when a few of them began growing, the smells were significant. Had good conversations with them, instantly, filters were put in place, smells were gone. The people that are in the industry now, in my tenants, those are the only ones that I can speak for, they're very professional, and they want to go on to the next step and be a part of the commercial side of this industry. If you decide to opt out, they will likely leave the city. They will go somewhere else. And maybe for some of you, that's okay. But when you look at, say, 55 tenants in the city, and say they're averaging somewhere in the 2,000 to 5,000 square feet, if these all leave, you're looking at close to 200,000 square feet of vacancy that now as landlords, we have to repurpose. Now, we took a risk in renting to these people, and that's part of the deal. But it will bring down, it will, it will affect the other parts of the light industrial component of Troy. Lease rates will come down, vacancies will come up if they're asked to leave. Plain as simple. So I ask that you opt in, make a good ordinance that keeps it out of our schools, keeps it away from our children. Make it so it can get to the people that need it and want it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Bruce Brickman.
My name's Bruce Brickman. My company is General Development Company. We've been developing industrial real estate for the last 35 years here in southeast Michigan and other parts of the country. And we were developing the city of Troy back in the 80s and into the early 90s, back in the days of Larry Kiesling, that I'm sure you all remember. And we built probably 15, 16 different industrial facilities and projects back in those days. But since then, we've moved on to other parts of southeast Michigan. And frankly, the city of Troy is aging in certain areas in your light industrial properties. Many of them are becoming functionally obsolete in that they have low ceilings, they're smaller buildings, they're not outfitted for cranes. And just as an example, currently, we have a client who is going to be leaving the city of Troy, moving to Auburn Hills to a new state-of-the-art 135,000 square foot facility, leaving behind another smaller empty building in the city of Troy. We have been asked by various clients, and we've gone to different parts of the country, to look at medical marijuana facilities. And what we have found, which I think is important here, is that in a lot of more mature communities, you end up with industrial properties that become functionally obsolete. And the medical marijuana facilities that we see in other states and other locations, these are very high-tech agricultural facilities with significant investments. We're talking hundreds of dollars per square foot as opposed to a typical industrial building that might be $50 or $60 a square foot. So these are investments in properties that are not throwaway facilities. When these facilities are outfitted, whoever is putting up the money for that, or whoever is operating, has a significant investment in the community. It's not something that's going to be there for a short period of time. The other comment, because I tried to look at this from above, we currently do not own, we currently do not only own any buildings in the city of Troy. So we don't have a particular vested interest in this at the moment. But there was one comment earlier about how you have your 72 caregiver facilities, and we have been asked by many clients to look in communities that have opted in, and those cities are where a lot of your current operators, my guess would be, will be moving to, which will leave more facilities here empty, and again, functionally obsolete. And surprisingly, a community like Orion Township, who is an extremely conservative community, who we do business with, was shocked me back in November, they passed a ordinance and medical marijuana opt-in community because they could see the writing on the wall here. And from studying this and going to other parts of the country, the real issue here is that the train has left the station, the toothpaste is out of the tube, and I think Troy has the choice to either decide to be ahead of the curve or be behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Ali Apahidian.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Ali Apahidian. I'm a Troy resident, and I just had basically one thought for tonight, but I think our city, our community has had its share of headline stories in the past couple months that we're all familiar with, with the charter amendment, the green space, the civic center, and now the latest is a design, the actual digital signs that we are, a lot of us are familiar with. And I think one of, my only thought, I just wanted to add to tonight's conversation, is to not forget the public engagement component of this very important conversation. And I think if the discussion on the civic center has warranted at least two, possibly three, public meetings where public will be invited to engage on the civic center discussion and conversation, I think this topic has equal, if not more, importance for the city and the future of our city. And I think it warrants equal attention for public engagement. That was my only thought for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up this evening, but I will, if you wish to speak, I will have on. Yes, sir. Please, please give your name.
Good evening. My name is Eric Dickow, and I hate charter amendments. So I represent the property owners at 1662 Austin, and I think I've personally taken many of you through the facility. I want to comment that I've also taken several other surrounding mayors, state legislators, chiefs of police, city members through the same facility at 1662 Austin. They have all commented to me that this facility is a model of what they expect to see in their community if they were to opt in. And the standard operating procedures of the property owners and the caregivers at that facility is at such a high level that they've invested money in advance, knowing what the state was going to do, just because they thought it was right. And they've all commented that they're happy to have an open door policy with the chief of police, who they've also taken through the facility, and that they are a true partner to the city of Troy and will continue to be, whether it's partnering with the Troy Community Foundation to provide education, other resources. And so I'd like to just say briefly, I hope you guys consider opting in to regulation. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak this evening? Please go forward. Give us your name, please.
My name is Stephanie Goodman, and I'm not particularly involved in the industry from a licensing standpoint, but I'm a real estate broker and insurance agent with my partner over there, and we have a focus on the cannabis space. I have tons of people calling me for real estate, and they always send me this map. The Cannabis Legal Group gave me this map, find me places with these green areas. So while I can totally understand the desire to delay voting, you are hurting yourselves because everyone's looking in green areas right now for purchasing property. I'm upset.
Anyone else wish to speak this evening in public comment? Thank you. I will return it to the table for further discussion. Is there anyone from the panel that wishes to say anything more this evening before we, before we, Councilman Henderson, would you want to say something?
Yeah, first off, thank you for spending your time with us tonight. So it's above and beyond, but we appreciate the education. It's no surprise to anybody at this table that I am a firm opt-out candidate. I don't, I've got four grandkids that live here in the city of Troy. I've had, I've got personal experience with marijuana issues in my, my family history. And I, you know, I've said this before, you know, we don't need anything inside this community that lends itself to our kids taking their time out of the ball in an ultra-competitive world. And, you know, whether we opt in or out, if we don't have medical marijuana or marijuana plants growing in the city of Troy, we haven't stifled the medical marijuana industry. The, people will find a place in some of these other communities that the real estate broker had mentioned, to be able to grow their product and, and get that product to whoever may need it. And I certainly, as one of the attorneys at our last study session mentioned, you know, I don't want to come between a caregiver and their patient, but certainly, I don't want to, with open arms, invite a product into the city of Troy that our parents would be disappointed in us over. So to that end, I, you know, I would prefer that we opt out. That said, if this body chooses to opt in, you know, I'll be an active participant in whatever regulation we can to tighten that up as severely as we possibly can. We're a leader in a lot of other industries and a lot of other aspects. Our schools are top-notch, our housing, the services that we provide. We do not need to be a leader in this particular industry. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. I don't know if other council members are at the point where they're going to declare whether you want to opt in or opt out. I'll put that up to the council. Does anyone else wish to speak this evening before we try to give direction? Councilman Henderson?
I'll just say, I'm, I'm still undecided at this point, and it really depends on what we decide we're going to allow. What bothers me is there's still a lot of uncertainty with what the state's going to do and where this is going to go. And I do imagine in a year, a lot of this is going to change. I'm considering maybe we wait, or not say we'll opt out forever, but maybe give it a year to see what happens. Also, the recreational marijuana is going to be on the ballot next year. I believe they have enough signatures. And from what I've seen, I think it's going to pass. So that may, I don't know if us getting ahead of that with medical marijuana is good, or if that's actually bad and we'll just have to throw out everything we do here. So there's all this uncertainty. I'm an engineer. Uncertainty is not what we like to deal with. So I'm undecided if we can maybe have, I would consider opting into a very limited first allowance, but I would have to really get strong approval from chief mayor and police and really have a deep dive on the pros and cons. So I'm undecided. I'm a little wary of uncertainty, but I'm not a definite no.
Okay. Any other council member wish to? I think we owe it to everyone to make a decision as to whether we're going to move forward with more discussion, with more education, with more dialogue, or are we ready to, to do something? I've heard from one council member that want to opt out, one maybe opt in, opt out. I think I'm, you know, if no one else is going to speak, I'll, I'll say something, but I'm, I think I'm at a point where we need to do something. And I don't, I guess I would just ask for the other council members, do you feel the same way, or do we need to, to educate ourselves more before you're willing to make a decision? Do we need, do we need to hear more from the public? Quite honestly, I think, I've heard a lot, I've heard a lot from the public. I've done my due diligence. I've visited sites. I've, I think if there's anyone in this room that has a background that I can say that I believe medical marijuana is a gateway drug. I believe alcohol is. I believe, you know, opiates are. I believe cigarettes are, you know. So I come from a world where I grew up in enforcement. And there were a lot of laws that were passed that I didn't necessarily agree with, but I was, that was part of my job, was to enforce the laws. Medical marijuana was passed by the residents of Michigan, and that has a big bearing on my decision-making. And when I look at the statistics, we're 68 percent of our residents in our city voted for medical marijuana in 2008. That has a bearing on my decision-making. And I don't want to, I don't want to see this not be regulated to the point where we have total control. I am not concerned that this is going to put a burden on our police department, quite honestly. And I say that because I was here when they built Somerset Collection, and the first thing some people said was, do you know what strain that's going to put on your police department? When they built the Columbia Center, do you know what kind of strain that's going to put on your? That's, that's not, in my opinion, how you should make your decisions based on growth in the city. And I think if you, if you regulate things to the point where you give our local police officers the authority to, to go into these places anytime they want, I think that's a good thing. And as Chief Mayor said, I believe this will turn into much like the liquor issue, where it becomes part of, part of your duties and responsibilities. So having said that, I, I'm, I just, I just think we need to pay attention to what the voters have said. I am completely 100 percent against recreational marijuana. I think we should be fighting every single day to make sure that that doesn't pass in November. The, the medical marijuana people that I've talked to want to fight that fight with us because they're in it for medical marijuana, they're not in it for recreational use. We need to fight that fight and never make that happen in the state of Michigan. That's my opinion. And I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to do anything that it takes to make sure that that doesn't pass. And I think that's what's going to have the detrimental effect on the kids. I think if we regulate this, if we pass a very, very strict ordinance, maybe allow one or two operations, that might be what's in the best interest of the city of Troy. And that's what I'm looking at. I'm not looking at to bring my ideologies into the discussion, into the way that I make a decision. If I did that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't even think about having marijuana. But I think the people have spoken, and I think we have an obligation to that. And that's just my, my two cents on it. And I don't know if anybody else in the room is ready to, to make a decision or to table this or put it up for three possibilities. this or put it up for three possibilities at a city council meeting, if that's what we want, but I think we need to discuss it further. Councilman Pennington?
I agree. I think we need to discuss it further, but I disagree with waiting, you know, I don't think we need to wait a year. I mean, I think we need to make a decision quick and sooner than later, one way or the other, not leave, you know, everyone hanging that's, has a business interest in the city. But, you know, I think it needs more discussion.
Needs more discussion in the study session or?
Well, just personal for me, I'm just law enforcement.
Okay. Councilman Pennington?
I, I think for me especially, and probably for some of us, we need to digest kind of what we've heard tonight and think about things, and so I think it might be difficult, and again, I'm speaking for myself, but to come to consensus tonight to give any directions to the city attorney, I would think it would be difficult. But that said, I mean, as you know, certainly could bring a council referral to get it on an agenda to talk about more or something, I mean, it would be something to consider. But I think for me tonight, I kind of do need to digest. I've done a lot of research myself, I've met with people, I've talked to people, I've toured facilities, and, you know, I can pick something from something everyone said tonight that I agree with, which is tough because there's been differences in opinion. So, I, I don't feel comfortable tonight giving direction to the city attorney on, I mean, because as I understand, that really the direction that we would be doing tonight would be to drop an ordinance first, as I understand, that would be the best course. And I think if we were to do that tonight, that sets a very clear message that I don't know if all of us are ready to commit to at this point. I'm kind of speaking for around.
I'm with you. This has been fluid. We've been doing our homework, this isn't new to us at the table. We're getting documents from the folks that have worked hard for a year to get this in order, and we're processing a lot. We have several things bubbling in this community at the same time that this is. I'm waking up at night thinking about them, and now this is a factor in it. I'm hearing what the business owners are saying. I am very familiar with folks who have benefited tremendously from the ability to have access to medical marijuana. So, my mind is, I get it. It comes back to what we are as a city and being a family-friendly city, being a city recognized for safety, and how we protect that while keeping all of that other in mind. And I, I need to study that and understand that some more, I think Councilman Pennington was saying too, I need to have those conversations. A question that popped in my head here that has been swirling, and I can't believe I didn't ask it earlier, but this is a cash-based business at this point, for the most part, because, because the federal, at the federal level, it is still seemingly legal. The crime that can come with that is very real. How an ordinance might or might not be able to impact that, how our police department can impact that. I hear you on the Somerset Mall, you know, Somerset Mall came up and is putting money forward to staff, police officers there to help keep it secure. All of, all of that safety and security is absolutely critical. And I, I know the business owners that spoke tonight understand, especially when you live here, that that's, that's an optic to measure. So, I, I'm, I'm where you are. I need to study this and process this. We don't have a hard deadline. We need to get it right for the community. And I think we need to give up, I need more time. I need more time.
You approach them to grant?
Certainly, there's an opportunity cost to waiting too long to make a decision. So, I think Councilman Pennington referred to that. Maybe we don't wait a year, but it's, it's probably not tonight that we need to, to make a decision. Opting out into this would be transformational for the city. And we've also got a few other things that could potentially be transformational for the city, specifically the civic center and on a no-less-reals scale, some of our site ordinances, which have caused a lot of controversy, are also extremely transformational right now. Like my fellow engineer here, Councilman Hamilton, there's a lot of ambiguity right now, and I'm not sure I am comfortable being on the leading edge of that ambiguity. Certainly, we have thirty-three pages of emergency rules. That is impressive and formidable, for that matter, reading through them. But at the same time, we also know that there, we anticipate changes. Some of them may be significant, and I think there's an opportunity cost to jumping in perhaps a little bit too soon. So, my personal preference would be allowing some time to, for, for us collectively and individually to look at the matter a little bit more now that we've gotten some great clarification tonight and to really soak and understand what this could do to our community. I, I also appreciate Mr. Apahedian's comments about public engagement. Certainly, we had a number of public engagement sessions over the summer for the civic center. We're having two more in January. Maybe we need something like that, or maybe we need some other conduit in which we can get a resident feedback. Not all residents are voters because they're not citizens, but they have a very real place in our community and are impacted by decisions we made. I, I would like to get a little bit closer engagement because, yes, the people have spoken, and that was in two thousand and eight, but there's always a certain amount of NIMBY that goes on in any community, particularly as it relates to, to medical marijuana or any sort of, I'll say, transformational ordinance. So, I would like maybe more recent data when it comes to what our residents may or may not want. So, that's something else to consider, maybe, maybe council feels differently and wouldn't necessarily want a public engagement session, but I think it's something that we should consider.
Any comments from council? It's a little hard to sum up what council wants to do, other than they don't want to make a decision. Go ahead, Councilman.
Just one comment, it's, it's unfortunate that an item this critical to the city, we, all we have is business owners here, for the most part, coming to talk to us about, you know, the benefits of, you know, growing operations in their facilities. And we don't have any, other than Mr. Apahedian, residents that are, that are here to, to talk pro-orkon. So, you know, I, I agree, I, we should, I don't know how we reach out, I don't know if we need community engagement sessions, you know, but come to the next meeting and talk to us about this because, you know, it's certainly a critical, critical thing, so.
I'd just say, I think the weather outside, my first thought was, there's not going to be any people here because this isn't really good for public engagement, so maybe that's part of the reason, but we still got to get to it. I, I agree.
Well, every time we have a study session, it's always nice, nice to have a conclusion and a direction as to where we're going to go. So, we did not get that this evening. But if I, if I could try and sum up what I heard from council, is that council needs time to digest the conversation that took place. There needs to be an opportunity for public comment to, from residents. So, to schedule another, you know, we have two coming up in January, I think to add a third is probably unreasonable at this time, but I think we can do another study session before a city council meeting, after council's had an opportunity to digest. And how about, would the last council meeting in January work to come back with a study session to talk about direction? Is that enough time to digest, reach out to the citizens?
January twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Yep.
Yeah, I understand, there was a lot of, lot of information that came, and I can understand wanting to digest that, but I don't think we should wait a year. I think, I think we should, I think we should do what we're charged to do, and that's make a decision on this issue, one way or the other. We owe that to businesses and residents, and I think Councilman Hamilton made a very good point. If we have two thousand card, cardholders today, the only place that they can get their medical marijuana today is in Detroit. And I've been to the best dispensary in Detroit, and I wouldn't want my loved ones to go there, and that's the best one. So, I think that, that is something, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying we should get into the dispensary part of it, but it is, it is a concern for me also. So, City Attorney Andrew Kishnik, can you set up the study session, the, on the twenty-second of January, to come back, city council come back for a study session before that meeting?
At six o'clock.
At six o'clock?
Just to be clear, the agenda will simply say, discuss medical marijuana, there'll be no additional information unless council reaches out to staff and asks for something specifically, and will give it to everybody. Does that sound right?
Sounds good. If council has any questions for the city attorney or for Mr. Schroeder or, or Ms. Edgerton, please reach out, ask questions, talk to, talk to the residents, talk to the businesses. I know there are facilities in Troy that have an open policy for, to inspect and visit. Once again, I thank you for coming tonight and sharing, I think it was beneficial to everyone tonight, the discussion that we had so far. Thank you for coming. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.